All right, good. This meeting in the City of Kingston's Zemmy Board of Appeals will now come to order. It is 6:60. Very prompt. My name is Brian Cafferty. I'll be chairing this proceeding. Hello. I will take a moment to explain how the Zemmy Board of Appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. Presently, it's three members. We have been appointed to service citizens of the City of Kingston, who perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary, unpaid basis. The other board members are...
Mayor Henry Tampon.
Andrew Tampon. Tampon. There will be a period of public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. All right, and with that, I can see we... I don't have an agenda, so I'm just assuming we have one applicant here. The others are not. Are no shows?
That's correct. I spoke to Brad Will earlier. Said he is no longer representing...
What a shock.
Yaya Enterprises. If Yaya Enterprises plan on coming, he said... Your question was in my mind, now that that's an area bench, should he just put a planning board? And I spoke to council, and since this was already applied further into code. Code hasn't changed in reference to this particular...
Yeah, quite a lot.
Quite a lot, so we proceed. I have a voting sheet, but he is not here. He's not coming. And he's old business anyway, so the new business would go before him. It's Ms. Raymond.
Hi, Ms. Raymond.
Ray, how are you?
Oh, Reyna.
R-E-I-N-A. I'm sorry.
Sorry. You want to come up and have a seat in the boardroom? Both of you can come up if that's okay?
Technically, it's in a trust and mine.
That's fine.
Brenda Reyna Seller. So we also...
So when you come up, just state your name and your address for the record.
One quick thing before we start business, just a meeting from last meeting.
Oh, yeah, the minutes.
Oh, right. Sorry about that. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Which was... That was a different meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and regarding August. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So it's August.
In brief, if I could, Ms. Raymond, almost 54 West Chester, T3N zone, which only allows for...
Eric, can you just finish this? All those in favors except the minutes.
This current zone only allows for a 30-day period over the course of a year for short-term rental. And Ms. Reyna is presenting her application based on hardship.
I am Brenda Reyna Seller. I am Josephine Starr. I live, right now, just bought a new house. We're at 50 Blue Stone Court in Kingston. And I grew up at 54 West Chester Street, and it's been a two-family. She's on it for over 50 years. And we have rented it out, rented out only the top for many, many years. And then, when my mother moved out, it was to take care of my grandmother. So she quit her job, I don't know where that was, but quit her job, took care of my grandmother, and stayed in my grandmother's house. So she had been renting this as a two-family house since then. So leading up to, I'd say, 2019, my mother's very conservative with her minimal funds. So she kept the rents very well. We've had great tenants. I think there's only been four tenants, three or four tenants that were not good all these years. Anyway, long story short, the low rent with her paying utilities, heat, hot water, started to take a toll when interests, you know... What's that called? They kind, sorry. There's some hardship already beginning then. And then, unexpected COVID happened, and then these people, I guess they heard that they didn't have to pay the rent, so she has two-family house that she was carrying on an absurd amount of social security and a little normal pension, which is, she can disclose that, but it's...
Seventeen hundred dollars.
That's crazy. So she was literally carrying these people for three years. And there was storm damage. They had chickens outside. They had chickens in the kitchen. We tried to evict them at a certain point, and she was very kind. She said, you know, just paying you whatever you could, even if it's $50, they paid nothing. Because, you know, that doesn't show to me, if you can pay a little bit, pay something. So anyway, long story short, there was some storm damage that was with that catastrophic storm. And they weren't letting anybody in. So electricians couldn't go. And we had a court order to walk through the home. And when my mom did this walk-through, we noticed a brown spot in the ceiling, and there was storm damage and water damage. So finally, they were evicted. One was evicted in January. The other one was in May. So she's got this huge amount of loss, not only loss...
So just one point of clarification. Your mother was renting two apartments?
Two apartments.
Okay.
It's a legal two-family.
Okay. She's not living on the property?
Not anymore.
Okay. I was under the impression she was living on the property, but that's...
Right.
Okay, good.
But, yeah.
Good, good, yeah.
So when my grandmother passed, she moved from the bottom apartment into my grandmother's home. Okay, so they were then evicted, and since then, we've discovered massive amounts of damage. And it's a board of 160,000 or more of loss of rent damages, all this stuff. So what we're applying for and hoping for is to get a variance where my mother could rent for both short-term and long-term to recoup some funds, because it's unsustainable where the financial, her financial position is actually wildly catastrophic. I can't even believe that this could happen. I mean, it's astounding. So I'm pleading to you for a variance in this special case. It's not like she's coming with a lot of money from a different area, trying to make some money here. It's this, you know, her home and her investment in the one thing that she has left to make. And I want her to be able to live comfortably for the rest of her life, hoping it's a very long time.
Anthony, my understanding is this property is located just outside one of the transit... What do they call it?
Transit.
Transit.
Transit. I mean, I look for the transit overlay. It's on the map, but this is T3N, right?
And apparently, you know, I'm at a loss, but apparently, short-term rentals are not allowed in this zone?
You can do 30 days in a calendar year.
Okay. So here's the problem. You're applying for what's known as a change of use, which is essentially a change of zoning use. That is the highest bar for variance. Bar nine.
Can you tell me something? Just what you were talking about, this bed and breakfast, a legal bit of rent. What's your code of revenue?
Revenue?
Yeah, so a bed and breakfast, so let's see, bed and breakfast is allowed use in... Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to try to write it. Bed and breakfast for West Chester. Places, lodging. By special permit, you could open a bed and breakfast there if you wanted to. You'd have to have full-time staff. Do that, you'd also pay a surcharge.
Yes, that's the...
If you want to operate a bed and breakfast, you could do that by special permit.
Very different than short-term rentals. So here's the challenge. Under the code, you are, you have to be able to... Aside from the hardships that are clear, clearly what happened with the tenants, you know, my heart goes out to you, having, you know, them, you know, squatting your house for three years without paying rent and then not reporting, you know, damage while it was occurring, has created, I get all of that. However, the code reads in such a way where you have to be able to demonstrate that you can't get a reasonable rate of return from the property based on the code and all the allowable uses in that property. And you would have to be able to demonstrate that on paper with numbers to show hardship.
Which I sent you folks.
Yeah, we've got a lot of stuff for damages and...
Yeah, which doesn't necessarily apply to what we're talking about. As egregious as it is, they really can't be taken into consideration. The question is, is can you operate that two-family as a two... Renting it 30 days? Or year to year? And, you know, I'm not an accountant, but I am in the real estate business. So I'm keenly aware of how all this stuff works. So, you know, I think you're going to be very hard-pressed to demonstrate that you can't get a reasonable rate of return based on the way it is currently set up, where once those apartments are in rentable condition in this market where there's literally almost no vacancy rate and you can charge substantial amounts of money. I do understand that your mom is gun-shy about long-term rentals. I will tell you this, that I am, I'm aware of a sort of a, it's a hybrid way to rent an apartment that still conforms to the code, but is somewhat short-term, but not long-term. And that is, where is the house located? It's on West Chester?
The house is on West Chester.
Yes, okay.
One other thing to interrupt you, because I do want to hear what you're saying. It is in Milton Hill. So over the years, that has been more difficult, because it's a young person's house. I've looked on other hills before too, where, you know, there's a certain age cutoff where you realize that when you're on such a slope, there's a slip and fall. So it really is a difficult piece of property to rent.
Okay. So just to continue that thought, there are services, one of them is called Furnish Finders, where you can list your home, and it specifically caters to traveling medical professionals.
That would be...
And they almost always are at the very minimum 30 days, but usually to three months' length. So, and if you can furnish one or both of the apartments, because of course, these folks are traveling, so we need to be furnished. You know, that's one option open to you that allows you to do this, because you can rent it for 30 days or more. Furnish Finders, yes. And that's one example. And then, of course, you could also, you could also continue to rent on a one-year lease basis.
What are the size of the units?
About 1,500.
How many bedrooms?
There must be two.
Well, so the first floor, it could be considered two or three bedrooms, because the master, and there's only a master, and a smaller unit that could be a master and a nursery. And on the other side, it could be a private closet.
Do you have to walk through, to get to one unit, you're the bedroom, you have to walk through the other bedroom?
Yeah, so they're both...
And that's not a bedroom?
Okay, so then they're both two bedrooms, but upstairs could be three bedrooms, because that's closed. There's no walk-through. So upstairs, there's the first room that's usually used as a living room. The front bedroom, that could also be a giant living room. And the back bedroom, that could be...
It's two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, or...
So I mean, just to give you a rough idea, like, right now, two, eight percent AMI rentals for two-bedroom apartments in socioeconomic area, you know, it just actually just went up significantly from the 2024 year, but it was $1,595. Like, is like the affordable housing rate for one of those apartments.
$1,500 square foot market rate apartment again for $2,000.
I've been in this apartment, and from my real estate point of view, you could easily get probably $200 to $2,200.
Sorry, but it's only like way to $1,000. You have to keep the hot water and the light and the electric to keep the hot water.
Yeah, so now that also, I mean, you know, my personal point of view, maybe the investment split it off. Like, otherwise, you know, including, I can be that's part of the...
If it's inclusive of utilities, then you can actually charge a little more, because that apartment would rent for $2,000 a month every day. And in most cases, if it was separated, they'd be paying their own utilities on top of that. So which would indicate that you could probably rent it for more. The whole point of this conversation is that you have the ability to get a reasonable rate of return from the property, which is going to make it very, very challenging to get over this bar of demonstrating that you can't, and therefore you have an economic hardship that would allow for us to go ahead and say, "Yeah, we're going to change the use." And you have to understand, every time we undertake a potential change of use, we're setting a precedent, which other folks can come in and then say, "Well, you did it for this person." You know, so we have to be very...
Can you ask me why it was cut off, just two properties away from mom? I don't understand all this stuff.
I have no idea.
It's almost like I feel like I was targeted.
Well, you also wouldn't be able to do it anyway, because the cap for all for short-term rentals has already met.
No, not true, not true. Bar tech is saving her a spot in case she got approval tonight. It's on the list.
I was one of the first one who were paid, and we didn't take a refund to keep it.
The cap?
I just wanted to say, I'm a sustainable building advisor, and I really do care about the neighborhood. I care about the character of the house. I've been on many boards, Green talent pipeline, and also Lake Lincoln Dale Property Association for many years. And I'm really pleading to the board to really examine this. This is...
So if you want, I can just review the criteria, and then if you don't have all the information you need to meet the criteria, you want to come back, they can table and have you come back with the additional information.
Okay.
But as you did explain, you know, it's a change in use, so it's got a very high bar to cross. And as I see from the language, you must meet this criteria, otherwise they can't then pass it, so...
Hold on a second. Yeah, could you, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So they, under the, it says basically that no use variance shall be granted by this board unless, without showing that you meet this criteria. So the criteria listed is the first, which was the main point that they were making before, is that you cannot realize reasonable return from any other use, provided that the lack of return is substantial, as demonstrated by competent financial information. So you're going to have to show the financials that if you rented it for the regular use, that you wouldn't be able to meet reasonable return, given your situation, okay, as compared to the use that you're looking for. Okay, so that's just the first. The criteria, the second criteria is that the hardship relating to the property is unique and wouldn't apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. So, and that's, so these are, these are the things that you're going to, you're going to have to... Well, if you're going to make those arguments, you want to provide them with, you know, evidence showing that, like, pictures showing here's Steve, here's the rest of the neighborhood, you know. We're not going to potentially be able, but you're going to have to provide evidence to show them so that they can make a decision if they were to approve. And they're going to have to go through on the record all this criteria and make a record as to how you've basically, you know, superseded the bar, whereas other properties in your neighborhood wouldn't be able to. They can't just go out and say, "Okay, you know, this is really terrible what happened. We're going to give you a use variance," because if they do that, you know, and then they deny the next person who comes along, that next person is going to have a successful lawsuit against the city, saying that they were arbitrary and capricious with their decisions. They approved it to you. And, you know, so you're going to have to really make a case before this board in order to get such a variance.
As we've already established, right now, without even a steep hill aside, you can generate probably $4,000 a month in revenue from this house, which is substantial amount of money. There's no debt on the house, right? There's no mortgage?
No, no.
It's very hard to get over this bar.
The next, the third thing is that the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. That may not be as difficult to prove, you know, but again, it's up to the board. You still need to, you need to show the board how that, you know, merely operating as a short-term rental can affect the character of the neighborhood. And then the last is that the hardship hasn't itself created. I think, you know, you've shown evidence pertaining to the storm damage, pertaining to the damage. So those last two may not be as difficult to prove, but the first two, that can't realize any reasonable return, you're going to have to be able to provide them with substantial evidence showing that, you know, regular rental or another allowable use of the property isn't going to provide a return that can adequately address the hardship.
Okay, Anthony, so when these maps were made, what would be the possibility to having this whole road changed use?
That would have to be legislative.
That would be, that would be enacted Congress, as they say. That means that the common council would literally have to change the line, the map for that particular transit zone. And the chances of that are very unlikely.
Unfortunately, if you were really seeking the best, that would have been, because this, they had hearings, and they were accepting comments from people for well over a year prior to adopting this. And there were people who sent in comments as to why they didn't like the change of the transit that their property would be as opposed to another. I don't know how many of those requests were taken into consideration with the drawing of this map, but that would have been much easier. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it would take common council to basically...
You know, I might be on board. I just...
I'll tell you that, that this idea of renting to traveling medical professionals for 90 days, if you just take one of the apartments and get it furnished, you know, it's there. Most of the hospitals are having to hire people who are traveling, and, you know, whether it's respiratory therapists, x-ray therapists, critical care nurses. Yeah, it's walking distance and everything like that. Plus, it has two bedrooms. So because of that, two people could together rent it for a period. So there's a lot of opportunity there. And you don't have to change sheets every weekend and wash and clean the apartment. It's a lovely, it's a lovely thing.
And be there and not have sofas on the front porch and trash all over it.
Short-term rentals are not as lovely and ideal.
Because everybody thinks that anyway, they don't, they don't work out as well as people seem to.
And, yeah.
You also have to think a couple, you know, when you're talking about making up a financial, trying to prove financial hardship, right? Like, and a lot of the things that you brought up in your situation wouldn't even apply, right? Because like, things like the storm damage are not specific to the use. So if the use was different, that wouldn't have happened. And it doesn't, that doesn't really apply to the hardship, to the hardship, our conversation. And, you know, things that would be considered maintenance on the building and whatnot, those can't be applied to the hardship, because those things would still be incurred whether the other uses exist in...
Well, it does apply to the underlying hardship. It doesn't apply to whether the property can get a reasonable...
Exactly, from a different use, exactly, yeah.
And so that's really the big one that you would need to focus on if you want to continue to seek a variance. And I don't want to speak to the board, but it does not sound, at least to me, that, I don't know how they would decide tonight, but if they were going to seriously consider approving, it sounds like you probably need to provide them with, as I said, especially pertaining to that first, that substantial competent financial evidence showing that you can't get that reasonable return.
And that's going to be a very tall order. You would have to be able to demonstrate that you tried to rent the apartments from month on end, and weren't able to rent them because of whatever.
Well, we have in the past, I don't know if my mom has the notes, with, for years trying to rent it. When you get close to fall and winter, it's just undesigned, it's very, very difficult to rent in the fall. Like, we're coming to the point where people realize it's going to snow, and we don't want to move here. It is, this is not...
I don't know. The demand for rentals is ridiculous. It's insane.
Can I ask you something? They are able to have SDRs for 30 days or a calendar year? Is that what you're...
So, I mean, I'll re-read it, so... Resident staff is not more than five rooms are rented to transient non-tenant guests for terms shorter than 30 consecutive days without staff on premises. So that is, that would be, that's a short-term limited, yeah. So that's listed as a supplemental use. So, of course, that page is not happening. The thing in the critics is broken. But yeah, so... So, yeah, it could be for less than 30 days, but you'd have to be on a list. So you could, you could short-term rental it, but the total number of days in a calendar year can't be more than 30 days.
Which is not a lot, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen weekends, theoretically.
That alone will help a little bit. Right now, we are talking, she has some...
Well, that you can do by right.
Yeah, all you have to do is like...
Right after the nature's...
You have to...
Yeah, it sounds like she's already on the list.
She's already, yeah, we're paid.
So my question is, moving forward, I don't know how you can have them vote on your application tonight, or you can have them table it, and you can look into the three options that they've kind of given you, like, looking at these rentals for the healthcare professionals and see if that's potentially something that may work in conjunction with, you know, doing the short... And then keep this open, but next month, either have everything that you want to present or be, like, if you decide to withdraw your application, you can withdraw it too.
So here's my question. If we were to vote tonight, the three people on the board who already are, could approve or deny it, right? Now, if it is, if we choose to go that way and it's denied, it's denied firm, or can we appeal it?
So I guess you technically can, you can appeal it. An appeal you would have to do with the Supreme Court. It's called Article 78 proceeding. You would have to show that they denied your application. Their denial was arbitrary and capricious. That, you know, there wasn't really a reasonable basis for them to deny.
So I wouldn't have the chance to come back next month for a deny. It just moves, it locks us into...
I'm going to strongly recommend that if you want to pursue this and try to, and try to actually convince us that there's a way you can meet this criteria, then you're probably going to want us to table it and not rule on it. I'm just ruling on it tonight. It's over.
Okay, so...
And your only other option then is to say we denied it, you know, arbitrarily and capriciously. And I can assure you that that's not the case.
Okay, I know that this is all great information. Is it possible for you to share that website, which the short-term that we need to...
It's all that stuff on the K City News website. If you're... If you're right now, you go to engage kingston.
Okay.
Dot com forward slash kingston forward. It's there, but there's also links to it on the planning department's page on the Kingston City of Houston website.
Okay.
I should have checked, but they were supposed to put a direct link to this on there.
Do you by any chance know whether, like let's say they keep their, their applications that they could short-term rent it in the meantime, the thirty days per year? Would that, is that separate? They couldn't then potentially seek the variance and if approved, then do it for?
Yeah, because that's by right, they can do that.
They can do it for thirty days.
So it's no reason for them to, so they should probably.
Unless they just don't, I mean, they have to pay a fee and register with the county as well. So, so if they don't want to do only thirty days, why pay a fee and why register with the county?
But then that's lose out on, on anything. It's not like there's only, you know, twenty-five, the, you know, limited at twenty-five full a.
Yeah, it's, I.
It is capped, I, I'd have to look back up what.
It's not.
But, but if, if Bartek says that there's a spot, I, I believe.
Yeah, there's a spot.
Bartek reserved a spot because she already paid pending the, out in.
But that spot is for thirty days and under.
Well, but thank you of the case because she doesn't have approval to do more than that.
Yeah, for a full-time short-term rental, the spot is. I think for the short-term, there may not be a.
Now competition.
Half of this, the, the list of less than thirty days, only the full-time. But you still have to pay the fee, no matter what.
Okay, so deserves, if you don't deserve it, she wants to bring.
Trust me, I'm gonna tell you.
She's not gonna lose that spot. She can right now currently rent for thirty days or less in a year.
She doesn't need the spot to rent for thirty days or less. She only needs a spot if it's a full-time, full-time, full-time. You have to pay the fee no matter what, but you only need to be, the cap only applies to full-time short-term rentals. Yeah.
Okay, and do you have a spot right now?
No.
Okay, full-time would be.
It sounds like that spot.
Wouldn't the thirty days?
I just want to explain that there.
Yeah.
Okay, so how would you like to proceed? Would you like us to table this or would you, would you like us to rule on?
Table it. Okay, we're in agreements.
Okay, can I have a motion to table?
I'm gonna have to table.
Speak on this.
I think this feels all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just maybe thank the board over there for helping us out. Everybody, it's a really long, long process as well now. I'm very grateful that you all are careful.
And then just for one minute, I just need to spell you that.
Brenda, B-R.
Can I get a set?
B-N-D-A. Seller, S-E-L-L-E-R. And Josephine, R-A-N-A.
Your name, sir?
Sebastian. S-B-A-S-T-I-A-M. And Pilatary, P-I-L-L-I-T-T-E-R.
You want to join the board or?
No, I'm just a, I'm a student, I'm Westchester. Oh, you're just saying you want to.
You're seriously. Me? Yes, I did, yes, I did.
I think I am in a wrong application.
Did, I might have been too. We need to stay in the building by that. There we go. I have no experience whatsoever, my goodness. My experience is the city to turn against time.
We should be recorded.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we have a different table the other one since the applicant is in, in Carroll, do you want to do anything on the other application? I'm gonna, what, what do we have to?
Record your turn.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, yeah. Brian, Brian, love before we adjourn.
Let's go.
I never came to this.
Yeah, uh, so I guess we, I guess we just have to table it, right? Because, or do we know?
You guys could table to actually.
All right, second.
Table, go home, you see if he wants to, table, since he's no longer represented by the individual, what asks us to?
I mean, I talked to Lori, it seemed like they weren't pursuing it at all. I'm just kind of surprised. Lori, Steph's wife. Yeah, so I ran into her last weekend and she was asking me a question about it, it seemed like something.
So we can, if you want to table, and if they're not going to pursue their request for the start of the hearing, then.
Yeah. They can be, um, old business next month, they want to be.
Can I get a motion to table?
We need to, just the old business, that other application, the applicant's not here, so it sounds like, motion.
I'm gonna motion table it.
Why are we taping it? I'm not taping it. They're not here. Why are we taping it?
Do you want to have a discussion, if you go through the criteria and make a record?
Taping a, I mean, the, the continued, the, their inertia.
Yeah, we sought, we sought their rule on their application.
Yeah.
So we can either table it and do it now, or are you gonna do it next time? We can, or we can rule on it now?
We can rule on it now. I don't see any reason that the outcome wasn't gonna be any different than it was before.
No, definitely.
So I just want to make them a record of it. So the first criteria, it's an area variance is what they're seeking. You guys recall the application, you did this before and denied it. And basically, so making a determination, taking into consideration the benefits sought by your variance, whether the benefits sought can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Any discussion on that, what's your opinions?
Yes, I think, I think that the, the code actually exists would allow the applicant to meet the needs that they described during the presentation. No variance would be needed.
Any other comments?
No, what he said.
So, is everyone in agreement then that the benefits could likely be achieved by some other feasible method? Whether the requested area variance is substantial, is the second criteria. I believe it was two feet further fence, correct? What, and two feet.
They wanted a six-foot fence around an entire.
The whole thing.
Yeah, yeah. It's a corner property.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
And they wanted it a stockade, to be a stockade.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't do that.
So everyone's in agreement, that's substantial, regardless. All right, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern, I'm coming.
All right, so you're all in agreement?
Totally.
Totally.
And last, whether the technical fee is self-created.
Well, if they put a six-foot fence, that would be.
All right, so I think you're all in agreement for all the criteria. So let's, all right.
We all said in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't understand. I'll make a motion to dismiss.
All the sign to adjourn.
All day, we're adjourned, yay.
Technically, it's a meeting.
Do you know, just on the second, if there's any.
You go to, uh. Oh, oh, yeah, we can, we can record.
Stop.
I need another pen though.